And you're now live.
Okay, thanks Kayla. So, welcome everyone. Tonight's special BIA membership meeting. This is a general meeting. It is July 27th and we started a bit late tonight as we're waiting for more of our members to join us. So, we may have pick up members as we go tonight. So, looking forward to that. So, I'd like to welcome everybody and feel free to participate tonight and make sure that we hear from everyone. It's important that we understand more about Chilong Mill and everybody is being able to provide as much feedback as possible. So, if you haven't been to a general meeting before with the BIA, welcome. The way we do it is we go through a bit of administration at the beginning, where we look at the last meeting's minutes and we go for an approval and then go through a couple of other things and then we'll discuss the possibility of moving through to Chilong Mill throughout August. If you had a chance, there is an agenda that is posted on the clearview.ca website. You have to go to clearview.ca committees and then you find the BIA, you click it, you look for a calendar and there's an agenda there. So, that's the agenda that we typically follow if this is your first meeting and you can always find all the information there about joining the meeting if you don't already have it or the agenda as well. And for those of you that might be watching on YouTube tonight but would like to join the meeting and had some trouble with the link, we have just recently reposted another link that will take you directly into Zoom and not through the ClearView website. So, if you want to hop onto that and join us, you're welcome to. Okay, so I'm going to start out by the approval of the agenda. So, I'm looking for somebody to put forward the motion, be it resolved that the Creemore Business Improvement Area Membership hereby approves the agenda dated July 27, 2021 as presented. So, do I have someone to put forward that motion? Counselor Broderick? And do we have a seconder? For the Linda, thank you. And all in favor of the agenda as is stated? Great. Motion is carried. Thank you very much. So, that means Luke, I know we can't see you. Everybody's raising their hands. So, if you want to say aye or yes or something like that, we'd be happy to take your vote because I realize we can't see you. So, when we ask for the motion, approval of the motion, you're welcome to vote tonight. Okay, so we're gonna go move to number three, which is the disclosure of disqualifying interest in the nature thereof. So, if anybody has a conflict of interest that they'd like to declare at this time, you're welcome to bring it forward and you're also welcome to bring it forward at any time during this meeting and we can discuss ways that we can handle that at the time. So, would anyone like to bring forward any disqualifying interest in the Chilong Mill or any of the items on the agenda tonight? No? Okay, great. So, let's move on to the approval of the minutes. We're gonna be looking at the minutes from our last Board of Management meeting, which was from July 13th, just a couple of weeks ago. So, hopefully you've had a chance to sort of look over them. Would anybody like to put forward the motion for the minutes approved dated July 13th, 2021 as presented? Linda, I'd like to put the motion forward. And do we have a seconder?
I haven't read the minutes.
It's hard because we're not, yeah, we're not a big group tonight and it's only been a couple of weeks. So, Kayla, can we defer this to the next meeting possibly for the minutes approval? Or because I imagine Counselor Broderick hasn't read them either, having just joined us.
I wasn't here, so.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, if you'd like, we can defer that to the next regular meeting.
I think that might be wise and we'll have more folks on board then. Great, thank you. Okay. I'm gonna actually switch new, no, I'm gonna go right through to chill. No, I'm gonna switch and put new business. I'd like to welcome Counselor Broderick to joining us on the BIA. As many of you know, Counselor McKechnie has decided to step aside and no longer be part of the BIA. So, we are happy to welcome Counselor Broderick to our group and he will be taking the place of Doug McKechnie as our council representative. I think what we'll do is, I believe you're here, it's sort of a special meeting tonight. So, it's kind of a funny one, but we look forward for you joining our regular meetings and we look forward to you, you know, supporting the BIA in the future and helping us and bringing forward, you know, a lot of the programs and activities that we do and to counsel and being our real representative on counsel for us. So, thank you very much for stepping forward and joining the BIA.
Thank you very much. Looking forward to it.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm gonna hop back because I realize people probably are asking why Counselor Broderick was here. So, I wanted to introduce him first. So, I'm gonna hop back into the Chilong Mill. So, the issue up for the discussion tonight is we want to put together a motion to decide if we want to continue with the Chilong Mill program. Chilong Mill was designed as a pilot project. We did four Saturdays in the month of July and basically between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM, we had closed the street to pedestrians only, pedestrians and cycle traffic only. And, you know, we moved quite quickly at those times to be able to take advantage of the summer and summer season, the July weekend season, and also to make sure that we ensured the safety of the community. Because at the time, we had realized that there was a lot of congestion on the sidewalks and people were feeling very uncomfortable on the street and on the sidewalks. And we wanted to give everybody a little bit more space certainly during COVID. So, that was one of our primary concerns with safety and congestion on the sidewalks and just making sure that everybody had had more space and had a really enjoyable time in Creemore. So, lots of discussion has happened back and forth, lots of sidewalk conversations and phone calls and wonderful emails. And we've had so much great feedback. And so, I'd love for anyone here who would like to talk a little bit about some of the feedback they've heard or their own personal opinion, this is this is our chance. And I know Luke is here, so we welcome him. And Pede is also here. So, we've got two business owners as well as the board members that can talk a little bit about their experience and give us some feedback about what they think about the past experience in the past four weeks and also moving forward into August. So, would anyone like to start out the discussion tonight or throw in their hat in the ring? Two cents worth?
Sure, I can kind of give my opinion of the few Saturdays we've had so far. Yeah, like they've been really good. We've really enjoyed being able to expand out into the street a bit, give pedestrians a little bit more room as they they walk by the front of our building. Our customers have a tendency to kind of conglomerate right out front and it's hard to control when you get a crowd going and socially distancing and all that. So, it's been nice on one of our busier days to be able to expand a bit and space out a bit. One of the reasons I'm joining tonight is I know there was some feedback brought forward that the cyclists were going through town a little bit quick. So, we wanted to make sure that we've addressed that with the, I think I spoke to you Lori and Linda the other day about it, that we've addressed it, not only from our customers but also just all the cyclists. So, we wanted to, if it was needed, we could put up a sign on, we could, Creemore Bakery could put up a sign on the front, just asking cyclists to slow down. We've been posting on social media as well to try to get the cyclist to keep in mind that there's pedestrians as well. But yeah, the feedback from us is we enjoyed and we'd like it to continue into August if possible.
Fantastic. Well, thank you, Luke. And I appreciate your feedback about the cyclists too. For those of you who are not familiar with that, in the first week, I think we had a lot of feedback from from local businesses that said that they found that cyclists were going at quite a high speed through town and they were wondering if there was a way that we could just slow them down because there were kids on bicycles and a lot of little children running around the street. So, I think we addressed that with our barrier formation at the front, encouraging bicyclists to dismount or at least to just go slower throughout the town. And Luke, I did see your posts on social media and they were great. So, thank you very much for taking pictures of the barriers and just asking people to be kind and to be thoughtful when they're when they're entering into the pedestrian zone with bicycles. So, I think I think that hopefully I think that really improved. I noticed there was certainly an improvement in the last two Saturdays. Linda, did you find the same improvement with the cyclists? Okay.
Yeah, I did.
Linda, did you want to add any comments based, Linda's the chair of our committee for Chilong Mill?
Okay, so I, Christian and I and actually David also, we were sort of accosting people to ask them for their opinion as to what they thought about the whole thing. But we were also approached by locals, so town people and other businesses and just other visitors throughout the town. And everybody said that they were thrilled, like that they thought that the whole atmosphere was terrific and they thought it was fantastic. And I do not, I have also spoken to a few people in the street that live on side streets to ask what they thought. And they did find it a little bit busier, but nobody to the point where they thought it was manageable.
I think that's a good point about our community neighbors and the local residents because certainly that was something that I was concerned about. I spoke to as many of them as possible and I did the same thing. I sort of ran after people when I saw them on the street in the last couple of days and said, hey, how's it going? And, you know, I'm sorry about the inconvenience of, you know, maybe people parking, more cars parking up on the street. And everybody said that, yeah, there's more cars on the street, but it's no more than a regular Saturday and it's not a big deal and it's only one day and we're happy to support the businesses. I got that over and over from certainly my neighbors on Elizabeth Street. So, that was good news. I'm sorry, I'm just 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 looking at my phone because Mylin is having a hard time getting in. Okay, okay, Mylin can't join us now. She said she tried to get in, but now she has to leave. She supports, I'm gonna just read this. Okay. Okay, okay. So, I get this a lot actually. So, this is kind of interesting. I'm just gonna read directly her text message to me. Hey, sorry, I tried to use the link. I have to pop out anyway. I do support, oh, hi Jen, I do support Chilong Mill. We do struggle to get product in. We did lose reservations from local seniors on Saturdays, but we gained them back with the walk-ins. I would love to see an event rather than just safety. I don't think additional food vendors are needed right now. I appreciate what the BIA has done. I miss our weekend festivals. Are some coming back for the fall. So, that's Mylin's message from Shea Michelle tonight. So, that was nice that she was able to give us some feedback. Jen, you're just joining us. Thank you very much. I know you had a bit of an emergency earlier and couldn't pop pop in. So, thank you. I know you're also outside.
I know. I'm sorry, everybody.
Like in family, there's lots of stuff going on for everybody right now. So, thank you for your time. So, I want to get your comments in case you have to pop out because I realize you're at your son's baseball team. So, we're just talking about Chilong Mill and just gathering feedback. Luke is here from Creemore Bakery, Pede's here, Linda, you know, if you have any comments from from your perspective or from customers or what you've heard or wanted to just give your opinion.
Yeah, I think it's like honestly, I fully support it. We have had a few comments where people say they have to get downtown before Saturday so they can get their prescriptions. But honestly, most people are in full support and I haven't had, like last weekend, I had no complaints at all from anybody. I didn't hear any negative feedback. So, yeah, I think it's going well. I think it's an awesome thing. If anything, people are saying how great it is. So, and it's great for the restaurants especially. So.
Yeah, yeah, we've had a tough year. Thanks Jen.
No problem.
Pede, did you want to chime in? I see that you've joined us. Did you want to make any comments or add anything? You've been kind of quiet. Do you know how to unmute yourself? Okay. Maybe he'll, oh, he's, okay.
I think, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yeah, sorry, it's first time in Zoom. Yeah, so we had a really good positive feedback from from our customers and everybody says that it's almost like a festive atmosphere on the street. And what we really noticed with our customers is that they really take their time to linger and to chill on meal. Like usually in previous Saturdays, we would see customers that come in and they say, you know, look around and then they tell us we're gonna come back, but they never do. And these past Saturdays, we can see that they actually do come back later. They take their time to go and visit all the stores and then, you know, do the do their shopping after. And they're not just like deciding to go away because it's too busy to to go back. So, we didn't have, I was expecting a few negative feedbacks from our customers, but we didn't have a single one. Everybody's really happy about it.
Yeah, and we didn't have any problems with people wanting to pull up their cars. And I know I carried several heavy items out to people's cars and everyone really appreciated the car parking at the end of the pedestrian area and people were pulling up their cars there and really happy to have that. So, that seemed like a really good idea. I know that was Sam's idea from the Creemore Flower Company. That was a really good one. Have anything else you want to add?
No, and yeah, most people also say the same thing that Mylin said. Everybody comments about how we should bring Creemore nights back and, you know, make it like like a whole weekend, you know? And I know that we can now, but maybe, you know, maybe we should start closing it on on Friday and have the Friday evenings for the restaurants and then rolls on to the next morning until Saturday afternoon.
Okay, thanks. Sarah, you haven't haven't given us too much feedback just yet.
Yeah, so I think because we don't have that many members here, I think it is advantageous for us to look back at that survey. I know we've discussed it in the past, but just to know that of the 19 respondents that we had, 75% of those respondents were an absolute yes to continuing with Chilong Mill and 25% were a maybe. So, first of all, 19 respondents is really high for us with the survey. So, that shows a level of interest that we don't always see with other things. And there was not a single no in there. So, that's that's encouraging too. So, I think we should just remember that when we're making our decision. From my perspective as a business owner, this is actually more my staff's recommendation because I haven't been here for two of the weekends, is that they do feel that people don't see Caroline as part of the activities and they would like to see the closure kind of pushed over. If if that doesn't seem like a major inconvenience or problem to the rest of businesses, I'm super flexible. I really, you know, I feel like for us, getting people to turn that corner is always a problem. So, you know, this is just more of the same. But if if the board sees it as a benefit to extend that area and if you've had any feedback from David or Cheryl or Travis, unfortunately Susan's not going to be able to be there. But if if the other business owners along Caroline are interested, I would be interested in extending the closure should we continue with Chilong Mill.
Thanks Sarah. I think that's a really good point. Certainly, I would love to see that that extended. But I think perhaps that needs to be another sort of meeting almost, I hate to say another meeting, but just I feel like we need to get all the members on Caroline Street together to really talk through that. It's hard. I agree with you. I think it would be awesome. I'm not I'm not a Caroline Street business. So, it's hard for me to say. I think you're right though. I think it by doing that and, you know, adding them skoko chairs, adding a little bit of activities, I think it would certainly draw people down there. You know, we could add like we were talking before, like maybe a couple picnic tables or something, you know, and that would really draw people in. I know that Travis hasn't been a big supporter of this particular particular initiative. So, I would be interesting to hear his feedback. I was really hoping he might might have come come up here tonight. So, what do you think? Should we perhaps leave it as is in terms of our, the way we discuss it tonight and then maybe, you know, leave for leave a little bit of leeway there. So, there can be an extension.
Oh, yeah.
Aside.
I'm super flexible on it. Like I said, the interest of the members as a whole is my interest. That was just feedback based on what my staff witnessed and I just wanted to share that.
Yeah, your staff have been so wonderful. I think the addition of the chalk on the street was amazing. And for those of you that don't know, it was Sarah's staff Natalie and Sadie who got out there and put the big welcome to Creemore guest book on the middle of the street where people could sign their names and tell us where they're from. And if you had a chance to walk over there, there was, it was all over the map where people were from. There is like Berry and New Lowell and it was really cool to see everybody's names. And I was telling Sarah today because she she had missed it, how I was surprised. And then there was the selfie station where people were drawing pictures of themselves on the street out of chalk. And there's a big heart in Creemore and it was just amazing how many adults as well as children were grabbing the chalk and signing their names and like making pictures and stuff. And I was just sort of surprised at that. I thought it would have just been small children. But in fact, it was people from all ages that were picking up chalk and drawing on the street. And it was kind of cool to see. I think it really added to the the sort of festival event, even though it's not a festival, it just added to the ambiance of it being a lot more fun on the street. And I think Luke will probably agree, it'd be kind of pretty cool to have it up at the other end as well near the pub where we could also have another, you know, guest book or something on the street that people could sign in the future. I think that really adds to it because we can't do a lot in terms of, you know, fancy events like we used to have. So, you know, these small initiatives don't take much effort, but really add a lot to the community's involvement in these kinds of these kind of activities. So, it's kind of cool to get that engagement.
Can I add something about Caroline? Just to go with what Sarah said, that we have a store that's corner of Caroline and and Mill. And I think that it would be really beneficial to extend to Caroline. So, I understand that you want to talk to Travis and the others, but maybe waiting to talk to them, you could push the fence already next weekend up to past our store or even Steve is not there either. And I'm sure like the culture lawyer wouldn't mind, you know, push it at least further down the road. So, then people can see that actually continues. At least it's something better than just stopping at Mill Street. Well, yes, then it kind of deters people from going that way.
Okay, that's a good.
Right, that works for you Sarah, at least while we talk to Travis and the other ones. And if the other ones say, okay, then just push it to the end. But at least, you know, create a more like a pedestrian ray all the way down.
Yeah, I think that would work and we can make some efforts to, we'll probably, maybe we'll even make a little bit of an effort to do a chalk pathway or something to our our location so that people are given the challenge to come around the corner. So, we can make it work no matter what. But I do think that idea that they're just going north, south and getting them to kind of think about going west for a bit is even if, yeah, I think even just pushing it a little bit gets people's eyes turned and the way that they think turned too. So, I appreciate that, Pede. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. I think it'd be really nice. Okay, I just, Dan Pro is watching us on YouTube tonight and he just sent me a message. I hope you don't mind if I read it, Dan. It just said from the township's perspective, he has had no comments. Come to him about the closure, all in favor of having it run through August if the consensus is to Chilong Mill. So, that's nice to hear it from Dan Pro. Dan has been a big supporter of ours and a big shout out to Dan who and who really helped us out so much. He's just been so generous with his time and his knowledge and helping us figure out this whole road closure thing, which we had never done before. So, yeah, thanks Dan for for being there for us. Okay, so that's great. So, I'm getting lots of positive feedback coming in, even though folks aren't able to join the meeting specifically. Okay, any anybody else want to add any other comments? Or I know there's some other folks watching on YouTube probably, but if anybody wants to send a message, Samantha is trying to, okay, we've got a message from, okay, Samantha K. Oh, okay, perfect. Yeah. So, that's great. Yes. So Samantha is trying to join us. Sorry, I'm just reading the message from Kayla. Samantha is from the Creemore Flower Company.
I'd love to hear from her.
I would love to hear from her as well because she's right in the middle of the street. There she is. Okay. Hi Samantha, thanks for joining us.
Hi guys, thanks. Sorry, I'm on my phone. I'm just trying to figure it all out.
It's okay. There was some technical glitches maybe on my side. I might have not sent out the best link. I sent out a very convoluted link. So, I apologize for that.
Yeah, I had a hard time joining you. Thank you for sending a new one.
Yeah, no worries. Okay, so we're just going around. I don't know if you've been able to hear any of what we've been talking about, but Luke is here from Creemore Bakery, Pede is here from Logum 172, Linda from Hundred Mile, Jen is here from the Pharmacy, Sarah's here from the Echo, Counselor Broderick's here and Kayla, of course. So, we're just sort of going around the table virtually and talking about whether we should extend into August, the Chilong Mill. If you have any feedback or comments, ways to improve or just want to give us your opinion, we'd love to hear it.
Okay, yeah, that's great. Thanks guys. First of all, hi everybody. We're the new kids on the block. So, just want to say hi for everybody I haven't met and thank you for having such a warm welcoming for us. We are quite happy with the Chilong Mill. We just find there's a couple of things difficult for us. It's that we do sell very heavy, large items. So, we need to work on a better way just to move that with our staff to customers' cars. I find a lot of customers are coming back on Sunday or following Wednesdays or whenever to pick up stuff. So, that was the only downside for us. Other than that, you know, we're we're in support of it. We are quite enjoying it. Seems to be a bit more of a social hour than anything. So, we're enjoying it.
Okay, thanks, Sam. You've been, that's been great. And it's been so great to see everything from your shop taking up the entire sidewalk. I have to say, it really anchors the street to see all these lovely plants and and pots and all this really cool stuff. You really, you and your team really do a beautiful display every Saturday morning. I know you start really early and it just looks amazing. So, I'm really glad to see you participate in such a in such a big way.
Does make a big difference.
It really does.
And that it just gives, it just makes everything feel magical when all of your plants are out front. So, it's not easy dragging all your stuff out. So, thank you.
Yeah, agreed.
I have a note here from SAS Dempsey at the Sanctuary.
Okay.
She says, we likely won't be opening for for service at their location, but Karen and I have heard positive feedback from all of our clients, we Chilong Mill and we would like to see it continue. We vote yes.
Nice. Okay, that's great. Thank you. Kayla, are you seeing any other comments come through on any of your channels? I'm just gonna quickly, Sarah, are you monitoring the Facebook feed?
Yeah.
That what that came through on? Okay, thank you Sarah.
No, I'm not. Sorry Lori.
That's okay. That's okay. I just making sure that we capture anybody who couldn't join or wants to add their voice. We're always happy to have it. So, great, Sam, about your large plants. I know that you and I talked sometime on the street early in the morning or maybe I spoke to your brother and we were putting the cart that we had purchased and we put it kind of in front of you and home hardware. Did that help at all? Were people able to use the cart or was the cart too small?
Yeah, the cart's too small for some stuff. So, we're just trying to figure something out amongst ourselves, maybe or figuring out, yeah, we're working on it of maybe just doing a delivery, like we'll do a delivery or something like we're trying to figure it out. We don't sell a lot of ginormous stuff, but when we do. It's always Murphy's Law. It's probably gonna be a Saturday.
Yeah, yeah. I know we sold a couple of really heavy things in my store too. And and I know we all had to kind of take our team and we all had to leave and go to somebody's car to help them take it all out. So, I hear you on that. But at the same time, I think it would be the same almost every Saturday anyway, because certainly in front of a lot of stores, it's really hard to get parking. So, I think I hear what you're saying, but on a regular Saturday, would they be able to get parking in front of your store either? So, it is a, it is something that, you know, might be ongoing. But good for you. That means you're selling big stuff.
Corey's parking space a little bit for like that, just for quick pickups and stuff like we just tell them to pull in there and we we go inside and load them up. So, it works for us. We do have permission from him for that. So, and and then we are gonna figure out delivery or something. So, yeah, we're working on it and we'll let you know it's to be continued.
Yeah. And if there's anything that the BIA can do to help you facilitate that, please reach out to us because we'd be happy to help you work through that if there's anything we can do from our side.
That's awesome. Thanks.
Yeah. Okay, um, so that's really good so far. Anybody else have any other comments or would you like to start forming a motion to, it seems so so far, everything I'm hearing is very positive. Start to form a motion to put together, it looks like for an August Chilong Mill pedestrian, pedestrian sort of initiative. The one thing I'm thinking too is that maybe we can add some buskers. I need to kind of be brush up on the most recent Simcoe County Health Guidelines. I know they sort of have changed recently again. So, I need to find out if buskers are in fact allowed before I do that. But I think that might be something that would add to the ambiance is having a couple of guys with maybe a guy with a guitar on one side and somebody with some other instrument down the other end of the street and it might just give it a bit more sort of of an atmosphere. I think the longer people linger on the street where they have somewhere to sit down, they have somewhere to eat or drink. I think it makes them a happier experience overall in Creemore. And I think certainly they spend more time here. Hopefully, they spend money in all of our shops and restaurants and businesses as well. So, that's really great.
Can we ask team to come and play every once in a while as well? Do you think he would want to do that? I'm just saying that because I can hear him now.
I don't know. But I did have a couple of buskers reach out to me this week. So, I know there's some interest in coming down to Chilong Mill and being part of that event. So, that's kind of cool. Also, I want you guys to bear in mind while we make this motion that we will need to bring some. Um, also, I wanted you guys to bear in mind while we make this motion that we will need to bring some money forward. Um, Sarah can maybe speak to this a little bit more than, than me. But uh, you know, because this wasn't part of our regular planning, this extended Chill on Mill, we may have to bring some of the funds from our retained uh, earnings, into our budget, because it's not part of our 2021 budget. And so some of the things I think if we decide to continue, we might want to spend money on, which we have done the last two weeks, our radio ads. We're using Max FM Radio out of Wasaga Beach. They broadcast a lot to Wasaga Beach and Collingwood. Um, they've been doing, it's on their sort of weekend to-do list, it's called, and they sort of read out um, some information about Chill on Mill, and how you can experience this, you know, fun event, pedestrian um, shopping and dining on Mill Street. And so um, so far, we've spent about $300 maximum on the radio ads. And if we want to continue, I would suggest, I would like to make a recommendation that we continue with some of the radio ads. Um, I'd also like to continue with putting some ads in our local newspaper, Creemore Echo. And also just finding out a little bit more if we might need to buy more chalk, because I know that's been a popular thing. We talked about bubbles, um, and these are not the bubbles that you blow, but the bubbles that you wave in the air with, for little kids um, to play with. And whether we have to pay buskers or not, I'm sort of unfamiliar with that territory, and whether we need to um, I don't know if they come with speakers, or if we have to have a cable for them, for, for a guitar. I'm not sure. So, these are just other expenses I'm anticipating. Um, does anyone else have any other expenses? If we do, uh, extend that to another four weeks, what expenses we might be incurring over and above what we've already spent?
As the person who's kind of been taking care of signage and posters, I think we're covered. I don't think we would need anything more to um, to extend it. We made the signage pretty generic so that it could carry us through. Um, but I do think the, the feedback we are hearing from our membership is they'd like a little bit of activation. So I do think, Lori, that, setting aside some funds to ensure that we can activate the space within the protocols is um, is, is probably what our membership's looking for. In terms of funding, I mean, we, we did last year, we set aside $3,000 for COVID-related things. We didn't spend any of it. So I, financially, we're in great shape, and if our membership is feeling like this is in, increasing their business, um, I think it's really money well spent. So, um, maybe some of the members who are not on the board could give us some ideas about, what they think in terms of ways that they'd like to see us spend money if we do go forward. Any thoughts? Luke or Sam or Petey?
Uh, just a question actually, with that regard. Sarah, you mentioned you had some sort of selfie-style thing set up. Uh, I haven't seen that. What did you have set up for people taking selfies?
Oh, actually, I mentioned that. It was um, it was a, it was a funny selfie station, but it was in chalk on the street. And so what they did is Natalie, who works for Sarah, is an amazing um, artist. And so what she did is she, she drew all these frames all over the street in chalk, and then kids could come out, and draw themselves like a little stick figure kind of thing in chalk on the street. So, we called it the selfie station. It was um, really cute, um, but it was certainly, it's just chalk on the street.
Oh, okay, I understand. Um, the buskers, I think, are a fantastic idea. Again, I, I also don't know how that works, if you have to pay buskers, or if there's just more like walkthrough and people tip them. Um, but having like a, maybe a uh, on this, the, the corner of Caroline and Mill, having actually maybe like a, a more formal kind of, this is a selfie station, um, like a, a pop-up or something about the Chill on Mill with the uh, um, the purple chair, something to do with uh, like, something like that, might uh, activate people to come into the center a bit more, and help the businesses that are on Caroline.
I love that. Great idea. Thank you.
I do have some purple painted frames, and maybe what I can do is mount them on that thing that we've used for selfie stations before.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll see. I'll see what I can figure out this week to try and do some more. Those passive activations seem to be a really great use of resources. So I'll, I'll, I'll see what I can do, but I would also, um, you know, Luke, if you feel like you know your customer, and there's something that we could, include close to you too, that you think would be beneficial, please tell us, because um, we all know our customers best, and uh, it's so helpful to hear new perspectives.
Yeah, I'm not, I wouldn't say that it would benefit like, just my business in particular, but I know our customers in particular are really focused on the experience of coming to the bakery, trying the baked goods, trying the drinks. Um, and we find a, a little bit more on Saturday, but generally, all of our customers, they'll come in, they'll buy something, they'll leave, do the street shopping, and then come back for another visit because they enjoyed the experience. So more activations, because like, you know, we have a, a new window decal that people take selfies in front of. We have some things inside that people take selfies with, so something like that on the street, um, not just to, to benefit uh, the bakery, but just to draw, uh, people in to spend a little bit more time, have it more of a family environment. Um, and I know it also just improves the vibe as it, as more of like a festival and a get-together gathering socially distanced, um, than just people with the street clothes walking down the sidewalks. Uh, so I think anything we can do to, to stop the walk is what I would say, um, would be good.
I love that idea. Okay.
Chill on Mill, yeah.
On it. So that's a really good one. I think we have some pieces and parts, and I might have some frames around somewhere too. I could, could try to donate to that.
Uh, Daniela actually had a suggestion, and she said, what if we ask some of our local artists if they would like to paint something on the street with chalk? We could have sort of a little competition if people want to, you know, the passersby want to judge it and give their vote. Thought that might be kind of a neat idea, if we can activate the local artists.
I talked to Martha too, about getting some of our artists to paint on plein air on the main street.
Yeah.
And she said their problem is, is that there's, you know, they're kind of uh, like everybody else, trying to enjoy summer, so they only have one person in the actual studio, so they can't do both, be in the studio, and on the streets. Because I did think that that would be a nice, simple way to just make the streets seem more vibrant and creative. But um, that was Martha's feedback. Uh, Sue's away, Liz is working. So, um, but maybe, I, I do think it would be great. Um, but even if they work on their own pieces that they can then resell, which might be more beneficial to them, having them out on the streets in any way, awesome.
That's true.
Do we talk to SAS and ask if she wants to, if we could hire her, if she wants to do like yoga or something in the, in the street, or kind of like, it's too risky?
I think any, that is specific timing and actual programming as opposed to passive, would maybe require a little bit more um, monitoring and that sort of thing. Um, as, you know, that's, that's my feeling, and I'm not saying I'm opposed to it. I just think we would have to be prepared, to do that work in the event that we did decide to have something that was at a specific time is actually a gathering. Um, not to say it can't happen, I just think we, we would need to be aware of um, of the protocols that we'd have to use.
Yeah. I think it's a conversation we can start. Let's put it that way. We could certainly reach out to SAS and see if she has ideas, or, you know, and, and she might know the protocols, and we can look into it together, and maybe even plan for the future, because things open up, you know, as we know, every, you know, couple of weeks, there's more and more sort of restrictions being lifted, so. We can certainly look into that. So, okay, so we're gonna look into selfie stations, some buskers, a couple more activities for kids with the chalk. Um, anything else for activation? Um, I, I love to see all the, all the, all the restaurants now doing stuff on the street. I love to see Shea Michelle and Oda. I know they've got their barbecues going, and they're offering sandwiches and jerk chicken and all kinds of stuff for people to take away on the street, which I think is great. I see people taking away food all the time, and even from all the cafes as well, from uh, bank and, and from Creemore Bakery, and sitting on the Muskoka chairs and eating it. So I think that's so cool to see that people are to take out and, sitting on the chairs and enjoying their day and just eating, you know, right in the middle of the street. I love that. So that's kind of cool to see. It really adds to the vibe. Um, okay, well, as we go, we can always, you know, the nice thing about us is that we're a small team, we're very flexible, and we're very nimble, so we can kind of move things kind of quickly. If somebody comes up with a great idea, or says, I'd really like to see this or that, or, restrictions have lifted, and we can now do this, I think we're just gonna be able to move and uh, be able to implement it best we can. We have uh, we have a crack team here, of people who really can work really hard to get things done, and I'm looking at Sarah and Linda, who moved mountains to get it all done. So, it's amazing what uh, what we can do. Okay, so, has anyone else got any further comments they'd like to add to this um, or any ideas before we sort of put it towards a motion? Because I think we're kind of headed that direction. Okay, so Kayla, I'm gonna, I'm gonna draw on you at the ti, at this time to uh, help us put together a motion, to um, be it resolved, uh, the Creemore BIA has decided to extend the Chill on Mill project.
Yep, I sent you a proposed resolution in the chat, Lori.
Oh, I didn't. Okay, I didn't see it. Apologize. Let me just look at my chat. Maybe my chat screen's closed.
Sorry, I just.
Oh, yes, okay.
There we go.
To Lori. I didn't scroll down. Okay. Membership, uh, okay, proposed resolution. Membership hereby approved to continue with the Chill on Mill initiative, with increased street activation as permitted within the health unit and provincial guidelines, with an increase to the line budget item of $2,000.
I mean, the reason I suggested was the $2,000 um, in the June 29th resolution. You had budgeted for 2,500, but uh, Sarah did mention that your signage was uh, pretty adequate to continue. Without new signage, but that's just a suggestion.
I think I was, I was going towards 1,500 to 2,000, because I think depending on the activation that we have to do, and like I said, this might change, like halfway through August, we might find that we can do something even bigger. Um, so that'll give us a little bit more money to play with, um, without having to convene the board again. So I'd really think that $2,000 would cover it, and we certainly have the money to put towards this initiative. Like Sarah said, we have extra funds that we haven't spent on events, and we haven't spent on COVID, so we cer- certainly can do this if the membership, feels that this is important for their business, and it's really helping um, promote Creemore, you know, um, as a tourist destination, and as um, as a place for locals also to enjoy themselves. So, um, I, would you like me to read it again, and then I'm gonna ask for somebody to put the motion forward, and somebody to second it, and then we will vote. Sarah, did you have a comment first?
I'm just wondering, in the last motion that we made, we included some dates, so that there was a, guideline as to when the project would begin and end. Um, I don't know if we want to sort of set the timeline now, so our membership has a clear understanding of how long we want to do this. Are we thinking Labor Day and then we're done, or are we thinking that we want to do Labor Day and then Thanksgiving? Like, I don't know if that's something we need to include now. Any thoughts there?
Yeah, that's a good idea, actually. I think um, if we look, there are four Saturdays in August, the 7th, the 14th, the 21st, and the 28th. However, Labor Day weekend is the 4th. So we would have to decide, like Sarah said, if we include Labor Day weekend in this, and if you find that it's beneficial to include Labor Day weekend, as part of the um, pedestrian, pedestrian zone. Um, does anyone have any thoughts regarding that? And if we, if we do it again, it would be lovely to talk about Thanksgiving. I agree, as well, as a pedestrian zone potential. Or do we wait until we have our September meet, you know, August or September meeting to talk about that one?
I suppose we did kind of talk about maybe our Thanksgiving being our first event, event, so maybe we just leave that.
It would be nice to sort of know where we are at that time, because restrictions might be completely different. So maybe, maybe we push that out a little bit, just because things change month by month, as all of you know. So, let's, let's keep it, if I could recommend, four dates in Au- August, and then, and then Labor Day. Anybody want to weigh in on Labor Day?
I'm currently with it, for sure.
You're for it?
I think we should include it, yep.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I think we should include it as well.
Okay, Petey?
Yes, I think we should include it too.
And Sam?
Sure, go for it.
Okay, okay. Okay, so that, sounds like, and I see Linda nodding and Sarah nodding, so um, I'm assuming that means that you guys are for it as well. Okay. Um, okay, great. So let's include that into our motion, Kayla, if we can now just, bend it slightly to include from August 7th through to September 4th, Saturdays. Maybe you could say Saturdays from August 7th to, through to September 4th. And I still think the budget can stay the same at $2,000. Okay. Do you want, Kayla, do you want to read what you have, or?
Yep, absolutely.
Thanks.
Uh, be it resolved that the Creemore Business Improvement Area membership hereby approved to continue with the Chill on Mill initiative, on Saturdays from August 7th up to and including the Labor Day weekend with increased street activation, as permitted within the health unit and provincial guidelines, with an increase to the bu, the line budget item of $2,000.
Okay, that sounds good. Um, would somebody, is, is there any other changes anyone would like to make to it? Okay. Jen, would you like to put the motion forward? I see your hand up. Yep. And, and do we have someone who would like to second the motion? It can be any of you. Council Broderick, thank you. Um, and so now I'm gonna ask for all in favor, and those of you on the phone, if you can say yes or no, at this point, um, all in favor, please raise your hand or say yes.
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 Okay, and um, and anyone denying the motion or, or not in favor? Okay, so then we have the motion carried. Thank you very much, everyone, um, for your discussion tonight and for your thoughtful comments. It's really appreciated, and I know it's a nice warm night, and there's lots of other things you can be doing, so I appreciate you coming out here, and discussing uh, something that's so important to the BIA. Um, okay, so great news. We are continuing with uh, Chill on Mill. Chill on Mill will be chilled all throughout um, August. I think there's some really fun marketing we can do around this, and we will also be promoting more and more on social media. So keep sending me your photos, because I don't always get around everywhere all day, so keep sending us your photos, and we'll be sure to get them up on Instagram. Okay, um, so that concludes our Chill on Mill portion of the, the meeting, and if anybody has any new business, um, I did move some of that portion of the agenda up, so we could welcome Council Broderick. Um, but if anyone has any new business right now, just raise your hand or let me know. Council Broderick? Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I'm just looking at the uh, BIA boundary, and uh, I'm curious if uh, if it wouldn't be time to expand it a little bit. Um, Caroline Street is uh, certainly, I think would be beneficial, and if we, i- it would be, and I realize there's a lot of residential at uh, at the end of Mill Street, but it would be really interesting if, if you could actually, in, uh, bring it up to the top and include uh, a, a little bit of, of uh, um, County Road dying right at the top of town.
Yeah. So if I could interject here, um, perfectly timely that you've brought this up, a great idea, because um, we are actively pursuing a boundary um, augmentation, something that Sarah Herschaff is uh, spearheading for us in her levy review and boundary review. She's working very hard at the Clerk's Office for these past months, to look at the zone. So certainly, I think in the coming month or two, Sarah's gonna put together a presentation um, with, uh, Sasha from the Clerk's Office. Is that correct, Sarah?
Yeah, I need to get on that. I think right now, kind of what um, my recommendation, and um, kind of what we've been throwing around, but we need to reach out to both of, to members and council, um, and Mara, and get some professional advice too. But currently, what we're, we're sort of thinking would be an easy fix, is um, making commercial properties adjacent to the existing uh, BIA boundaries, seeing if they'll come and join us. So um, there is a pretty solid, um, protocol to follow in terms of how we have to go about doing that. Um, we have to get support of our membership, and then council has to do that. So it's a bit of a rigmarole, but it's definitely on our books. We have been functioning with the $20,000 levy since any, for as long as people can remember. We feel like we're providing more and more service, and there's more and more businesses using those properties, where before they, you know, the adjacent commercial wasn't really utilized. We're just, there's businesses in there, they're benefiting, and I think a lot of them, actually are bigger. So our biggest problem with the blurry boundaries is that we want to service people, but it creates problems for us in that um, going outside of the boundaries makes other people expect service too. So we really need to get this cleaned up, uh, so that we can serve our community properly, and so that we um, we really are well-defined as to what our service area is.
So Council Broderick, I'd suggest that if you don't mind, um, we can certainly put a pin in that conversation, because that is certainly a conversation that will be coming up in the next months. It's something that we're working very hard to, to, to do and to complete. So um, that is where we're at. So it's like, stay tuned for more information on that one.
And uh, Council Broderick, it would be really quite advantageous for me if um, when meeting with Mara or Sasha, if you wanted to sit in, because then you can take that information and help inform other council members, so that when. if you wanted to sit in, because then you can take that information and help inform other council members so that when it does go to the table, you can really help us, um, explain the benefit.
Yeah, just, uh, just let me know, uh, Sarah and I'd be happy to sit in with you.
Okay, I think that, that would be really helpful for us.
Great. Thank you.
Long as it's not in the next two weeks.
Oh, no, no, no. This is the problem, right? Summer, it's so short.
Okay, um, was there anything else? Anyone else would like to, sorry, were you finished, uh, Council Broderick?
I am, thank you.
Okay, anybody else have any other new business they'd like to bring up at this time or would like to wait to the next meeting? It's up to you. Okay, so guess what? Our next meeting is August 10th, same place, same time, 7:00 PM. So, um, it will be a Board of Management meeting, but if there's lots of interest from the members, you're welcome to come. We love having you guys here. The more heads, the better, all of these projects, the more thinking. We love it. Um, you know, participation is super important for us, so please tell everyone on the street that if they want to participate, we're always welcoming to have more and more, uh, people join into our BIA and give us their opinions. Negative or positive, we don't care. Feedback makes us all better. So, um, that's our next meeting, August 10th. We're gonna have a full agenda and we'll be back to sort of our regular kind of agenda meetings. This was more of a special meeting just to discuss the one initiative. So with that, I am going to, um, ask for someone to make a motion to adjourn the meeting and, um, and say, "We're done." Who would like to make a motion? Linda, Council Broderick would like to second it. All in favor of adjourning the meeting tonight at 7:00, 8:02. Great, motions carried. Thanks very much, everyone. I so appreciate your time. Get out there, hopefully get an hour left of sunlight and enjoy your evenings.